Yeah, I'd like to just want to... I guess I'm a little disturbed as one of our audience participants are with the last sentence where she says, "I fear for my business." And I haven't talked with Jacqueline, I don't know exactly what Mr. Buckner had informed me about it. And if there was some sort of, if anybody had heard something to the contrary about this, I mean, we all know people come and go, but this is a little disturbing to read.
How did I just say that she didn't say that she absolutely has a threat of a fear to her business? Right? Didn't she have any information about this to be... I'm sorry, Mr. Cleary.
She's getting blowback apparently, so I mean, it doesn't refer to something as, you know, I mean, we make, you know, obviously, and I understand what she's saying here, and I understand how she feels. It's a big decision, and, you know, no matter what, we're going to be criticized by the public. Whether we go to her back, if we do good things, we get criticized positively. If we get, and I think she's looking, I don't know, I haven't talked about it. It upsets me that she feels that last thing, "I fear for my business," is kind of a big deal because she has taken up one of the buildings downtown for her business and done a really good job with everything there. So it kind of bothers me that that's been, you know, you know. So I don't know what we can do for her to investigate it for that, but if we do go, well, it's a sentence ago for that reason.
Mr. Buckner, had you heard anything?
I mean, I got one, I'd say... My discussion with her was that she got some blowback from several of the business owners in June. And it put a lot of pressure on her, and this stems from the F-41 rule. It's my understanding that this is not the first time that this has happened with planning commission members, current or in the past. There has been other times where planning commission members' jobs have been threatened. If I could dig to the bottom of it and get some solid answers, I would because this is intimidation, coercion, which are all part of the RECO Act, and not good. I'm just hoping that it's over with in the area. Probably not, but we have a tough, tough job to do. And no matter who votes which way, we just have to support each other. But that's, that's a decision that was made by the planning commission and or my office, and move forward. I'm upset about it, it's not right, but, you know, what are we doing?
Was a police report made?
Call the attorney.
Mr., I'm sorry.
I understand, but you don't, we don't know what to do about it.
He may not speak, he may not speak.
Okay.
We need to preserve order. This is a democratic process, we follow the rules, and this is part of it. If there is any further information, it should go to the proper authorities, and if anybody has it. But as a board, we're dealing with a limited statement, we're dealing with a fear, we're dealing with blowback, but we do not have specifics. So this is not a fishing expedition, but we will act appropriately when we are given information that we should act on. Is there any further discussion before we move to...
I would, I would just like to say, I'm sorry to see her resign. It's a shame that this is part of people that volunteer for decisions to be, to come under these type of personal attacks. Anybody knows that idea? I would just like to say that I appreciate everybody that serves in the volunteer position, knowing that this kind of action's been happened. And anything that's being said right now, I haven't heard anything, but, you know, I don't like to hear hearsay secondhand. I think she resigned, and she made a statement that expressly gives us reasoning line, and we need to respect that.
Thank you. Any else, anyone else? I'd like to move that we accept her resignation with regret.
I second that.
Motion by Hassan Godd, second by Mr. Cleary. Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Beckner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
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 Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenbauer?
Yes. Motion carries. And how would we convey that to her? Mr. Buckner, will we provide her with a copy of the minutes, or what's the...
I think they need to go to the board, board trustees.
All those in board trustees, okay, so that we see that, act accordingly, okay. Next is the municipal building site recommendation. Is this you, Mr. O'Connor?
After seeking your more guidance from my boss and our township supervisor, we were given a task. Those two recommendations, recommendations are just what they are. And bring it back to the board at the next meeting as to where all, all the information's out there. A lot of the light work that's been done. You guys know what the recommendations were. They still stand from what they were four, five years ago, six years ago, a decade ago. So that's what the board's asking.
But respectfully, respectfully, we don't know that. We're a relatively new board, and I, I gather that you're bringing this back for reconsideration, but the, this commission unanimously determined at its work session to recommend to the board of trustees that we have a charrettes with regard to this particular issue. So, I'm sorry, do you quite want, if you want to say more about it?
I can make that recommendation to the board, but I have an ungood authority, and I'm just going to take it back.
I just have, I have a statement, actually. So I'm new to this board, and I want to make sure that we're doing this the way that we're supposed to be doing it, right? A company doesn't come to us and say, "Where are we going to put this business?" And we tell them they can put it there. Our job is to make sure that they fit within the ordinances of the township. It's not our job to tell them where to put it. The Asco Township wants to decide where they want to put it, and then bring the plans to us. This is just my feeling, bring the plans to us to make sure that they fit what the ordinances say, because that's our job. It's not our job to pick the site for them. The PowerPoint you sent out, the place has been picked, been picked by the people, I'm saying, right? So it's not our job to say, "Okay, you can build this here," and then we have to prove it to... I think that the onus goes on to the township board to decide where they want to put that. That's just my opinion. We're not in the business of, we're not on this board to decide where businesses go, what they can purchase to build anything. We're here to make sure that they fit within the ordinances. So again, it's a kind of a touching thing during a voting year, but I think that we need to kick it back to the Asco Township Board and let them decide. It's all right for them to decide by this PowerPoint presentation. The township, the town people who came, they told me they decided where they wanted that unanimously. So I don't think it's a, it's not for us to say that, "Let's put it there." I mean, I'm just speaking my opinion from what I know we're supposed to be doing on this planning commission board, so...
Mr. Cleary, for any information, is the PowerPoint you're referring to from 2019?
It's, yeah, it's November 29th.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Connor?
And just to clarify for our audience, we were all sent a copy of this PowerPoint presentation that was recovered by Mr. Buckner in the archives, which I have to agree with Mr. Cleary, is it clearly shows that the charrettes have already been done, all the information's been handed on, disseminated, the public meeting has been had, and for it to be in now, if this was 2019, it started probably in 2018 or before that, that we are deep into this. And for us to be sitting trying to be the people that decide, it's been decided. And I don't see any reason for this planning commission to spend any more time or for the township to spend any more money on this. It goes back to the board, and it's clear where it should go. They have really two choices that they can make on this, because there's one that's too expensive. Well, there's two that are too expensive. But I agree with Mr. Cleary that we send this back to the township board for them to decide what to do next.
Any further discussion? Mr. Taser?
The damage to the town hall meeting, actually, like you said, is very thorough. The only added thing since that time was the updated structural needs that was kept in January of this year. So I would agree to send it back to the board of trustees with all the added information. And Rick Freeman, who's also been working on that for us, he's been our, our lead, actually, on this project. He has that, all of that type of information already. So I think we're ready just to have a motion, give, and send all the, all of the information for the municipal building study back to the board of trustees.
One more point, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor?
If, if I may tack on to what Mr. Taser just said, we also just had an environmental, an environmental impact study done on the building to include the structural needs and, and all the time and money and investigations that we've had on the present building. So there's plenty of information from the board to make a decision on this as to whether to amend.
And that's the information that Rick Freeman, that he has.
Sure. Just wanted to make sure that...
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
So is this motion, or somebody to make a motion, that this is based on the recommendations previously done in the town hall meetings and the current PowerPoint?
Good question. Mr. Cleary?
So that they're clear that we're clear, because the mud and water, it's just being muddy water. We're not in the business of telling people where to put their buildings. We're in the business of making sure that this is where this is, and the Asco Township Board, I'm just telling them, I mean, that's, you know, they had the town hall meetings, they had people there, as much as they could, right?
Information's there, figured out.
Right, figured out, I mean, that's, then when they start to, to build a building, and that's when they need to help us to make sure that it fits the ordinances. So there needs to be a motion, maybe, to draw on.
Perhaps a counterpoint to that, just to make sure that the discussion is fair and full, the township board did seek from us a recommendation as to where, although that was originally revised version of what Jay originally asked us to do when we developed this committee of the whole, which was more of a larger recommendation of consideration. So I just wanted to throw that out there to make sure that we don't feel that we are shucking our responsibility by not speaking to where.
I think if there was any committee, they need to go to the C committee, right?
Good point, Mr. Cleary. Anyone else, Mr. Taser?
Yeah, the way I remember it was originally, the where was not, in fact, the where was a number of locations. It was a one location, it was, the where was thus locations within the community. So, and that's why we sent the engineering staff to review and pull all of that information out. And they did, and that's where that, that's where all that information came from. Because they, and Rick Freeman has expanded on that now, since that time, there has been a work that was been done. We revised the, the square footage, we revised, there were other things that, that came along, that Rick Freeman has that information. He did send that, a lot of that information to reports to us. It might have been previous to the township, but he does have that. I mean, we're still, still without, ask for that information. But I think that information is what the board of trustees is actually seeking. That's, that's all there, and I think we've done the job that was asked of us to do. And my recommendation is to send that information on to those four sites that were originally, with the new information that Rick Freeman is providing, and send it back to the board.
Any other discussion? So I have a comment, I think the one thing that was motioned last time, we should have a charrettes. If I just, again, in favor of another charrettes, does, does half it that was presented to the public to change the PowerPoint that we have, that's 2019 PowerPoint? So for members of the audience, there was a PowerPoint produced in 2019, it is available on the public records. And if, so are the four sites have been, have they been made public? Say what they are.
They were talked about in our work session.
Did we talk about these four sites in the work session?
Yes, it was.
PowerPoint, okay. So just for the record, they were family fair, key bar, town hall, existing town hall, and the top field.
So I think, I think another thing that would be good, let them know since they don't have the PowerPoint, is that it was asked basically prior to the information being given out to people who were here for the town hall, to mark the spot on the map where you'd like to see this new development go, right? And if there was a presentation on the four properties, and then please put your dot back on there where you think is that the information you received, and it was overwhelmingly one in particular property. So, and I think, you know, our township, our...
I wonder what the property is?
Yeah, we have no idea what you're talking about. What's the one property? Can someone just say it?
Point of, point of origin, we have a score, it has a score of ninety-seven, whereas the others are...
Point, point of origin, we're going to get into something that's not going to be fair to the audience here. By reading one part of, of a twenty-nine page, I, I understand where you're going, and I emphasize, I was going to ask if we could have Mr. Buckner see that this gets on the website, and then everyone could, could look at it, because I know that he had to go into the archives to find this to begin with. So without going too far off the rails, is that we make a motion, which I may do here voluntarily, and send it back to the board, meanwhile, the audience could go and look at this themselves online. And we know that it's the right thing to do for all of the township residents, is to be able to see this, to answer this question. And please, audience, understand that we don't want any more additional information, incomplete misinformation going out there with any kind of prejudice. We'll let you read it for yourself, and then you can decide from that. I think that would be fair. I don't, I'm not asking for anyone to agree or disagree, but I, I believe that would be fair to our audience members here, and I, and I hope they can appreciate what we're trying to do here. Without further ado, I'd like to make a motion that we take the information that has been gathered, including the November seventh, 2019 PowerPoint presentation done by the previous township board, with all of the newly gathered information that we have through our engineers and investigations that we've had, including structural needs assessment and the environmental impact study, return that to the board of trustees for them to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Is there a second motion by Mr. O'Connor?
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Cleary. Motion by Mr. O'Connor, second by Mr. Cleary, and I can, I can restate it appropriately. It is to, to send all the gathered information to the township, including the 2019 PowerPoint, make sure that that's posted for the public to see, and that that would consist, that would comprise our recommendation. Is there any further discussion? I'll recognize myself for earlier discussion, and then as I, I believe that the charrettes were used only that that's five years ago, so it was done, and we know that for top field, it is a hot topic, perhaps other sites as well. But clearly, I'm in the minority, so any other discussion, or the vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Beckner?
Yes.
Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenbauer?
No.
Motion carries. Next, we have piece number 201, 202, for revision of the site elevation. Is this also the Asco County Board?
Yes.
So we've got, okay, we'll move on during the hearing. And then now, we're going to have a public hearing by three proposed new ordinances, and I believe Mr. O'Connor, and he's... We're going to start with the site plan review I reported, which is the amendment to Article 10, Section 10.1 through 10.5 regarding revisions to the site plan.
I move that we go into public hearing for site plan review ordinance, Article 10, Section 10.1 through 10.5 regarding revisions to the site plan review provisions and procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Taser, do you have a second?
Support, O'Connor?
You roll call, please.
Ms. Beckner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, we are in public hearing. During the public hearing, we will provide, Mr. O'Connor, we will provide input and analysis. All comments regarding the public hearing will be directed to the chairperson. Public comment shall be limited to four minutes per person. The chair will accept opposing comments, first asking the person's name and address. When opposing comments have been heard, comments in favor will come forward. All persons will be allowed to speak once. After all, have the opportunity to speak. The chair can allow questions from the commission. At the direction of the chair, additional comments may be permitted by the audience prior to the motion to close public hearing. After that, we'll move to close the public hearing, and we'll have deliberations from the commission members. When the deliberations are complete, we'll close the deliberations. And we'll have a roll call vote, and we will inform the committee of the township board's decision. That being said?
Yeah, I can... Currently, in the current, probably more than 165, we have sections 10.1 through 10.5, which addresses site plan review. The provisions in the current code are somewhat outdated and do not really address what the standards are that are being used by other municipalities throughout the state. So the idea was, was to do the amendment. Part of the amendment is, it, it quantifies to the planning commission what standards you're going to use for the approval process, which are, they're currently in the ordinance, but there's only like three or four. So it doesn't give the planning commission or the applicant much information as to what they need to provide in order to have a site plan approved. And as, you know, as you all are aware, according to the state statute, if the applicant meets all the requirements in the site plan provisions, then the planning commission is required, required to approve the plan. So the new ordinance will have standards for site plan review, that get into things like site design, privacy, emergency vehicle access, circulation, parking, soil erosion. And it also requires that when the applicant submits his application, which, to the zoning administrator, that part of the, that application then gets disseminated to all of the different public agencies. So it would go to the copy, would go to the Asco, Iosco County Road Commission, MDOT, it's on a state highway, it would go to the soil erosion at the county, it would go to the fire marshal or the public safety division, it goes to the township engineer for their review. So all that information is collected in advance before it comes to the planning commission. So the planning commission has all of the necessary information. In terms of the application requirements, there are thirty things that are specified which need to be located on the plan and in the application narrative, some of which are currently being asked for. But this actually provides the applicant with a really good checklist of what needs to be provided. The new ordinance also allows for a pre-development conference, which would be with the designated township officials, which really comes from, from the zoning administrator, would have a pre-development conference to go over all of the requirements, so everybody's on the same page. And then there's a pre-application conference, where the applicant has the, has the, it's not required, it's voluntary. If they want to come in and have their application reviewed in advance by the zoning administrator, the township planner, and any other, like, like Mr. Freeman, who's a township engineer, try to answer questions before it gets to the planning commission, so we can get those resolved. The idea is to lay out everything that's needed, to get all the review agencies, get their comments. By the time it gets to the planning commission, everything's pretty much been resolved, and, you know, kind of like the bow's been tied around the package. The other provision in here that is new to you is that if a project is permitted by right in the zone, in a zoning district that requires a site plan, and it's less than 5,000 square feet of new development or construction, that project will write into an administrative review committee, which includes the zoning administrator, the planning commission chair, a planning commission member selected by the planning commission chair, and the planning consultant. So there's a, a group that would review the plan if it's less than 5,000 square feet and permitted by right. And if they meet all the requirements, and it gets approved by the administrative committee without having to go to the planning commission and get delayed for another thirty-five, thirty to forty-five days. So it's, it's a way to be more development-friendly to the applicants, so they don't have to wait as long, especially if they have a small property. It allows for the approval by the planning commission, the planning commission can have conditional approval if they feel that there's some other additional information that's needed or that has been omitted. And then the planning commission also has the right to denial. As part of the conditional approval, the planning commission can put forth as a condition, a timeframe, that the site plan's approved, like, for example, a lot of communities will attach that the site plan is valid for one year. And the way that that's managed is they have to come in and take out a, they have to get a zoning permit and a building permit. It's the building permit that is the timeframe, because they can come in and get a zoning permit, but then they may delay going to the building department to get a building permit. So typically, a condition is set that the approval is good for one year, and that year is for a day of approval, and then the way it's monitored is if they get a building permit or not. Now, if they don't get a building permit, the applicant can come back to the planning commission and ask for an extension, or the planning commission at that time can say, "We're not going to give you an extension." And we all have to... "We're not going to give you an extension," and we all have to respect. So it gives the planning commission a little bit of leeway there. But that's in a nutshell. Really, the reason why it was done is to standardize the site plan review process, so the applicant knows exactly what's required, and getting agency approval and giving standards outlined that the planning commission needs to check off as part of the approval process. So do you have any questions?
So, um... Any one in opposition to this ordinance, it's the main speaker. Now, is there anyone in one such situation? In opposition, is Mr. Eichmann?
Oh, not opposition, I just have questions.
I do too, whenever that comes up.
Okay.
So no hearing, that there is no one to speak in opposition. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor?
Well, Madam Chair, if I may...
Yes.
Procedurally, the public hearing is just open to the public to ask questions. Doesn't matter if you're in support or against, the public hearing is just generally for the public to ask questions to the planning.
Yes, I'm sorry, I feel, according to my laws, I'm obliged to ask for the opposition in favor, then we can go to the question. So please go ahead.
Okay. And looking, this looks great. I really appreciate the whole checklist, you know, concept for people that are doing this. If I look at the, you know, the current site plan application has, you know, it's pretty gentle, right? And then there's on the second page, I think maybe there's this little box that you can like draw what you want, and all that kind of stuff. It's really rudimentary. But if you look at 10.4, underneath that checklist, number D, it says, "All site plan drawings shall be submitted on two sets of 24-inch by 36-inch sheets, and then ten sets of 11-inch by 17-inch sets, and in a digital PDF format." That sounds like a vast change from what we're going with, and...
I'm sorry, that sounds like...
A vast change on the current procedure. I mean, I don't know, you know, I'm looking at this wrong or what, but that's, you know, I have to go to a specialty printer, first of all, to go and print all that, and all that kind of stuff, so...
Well, the reason for that is that rather than the planning commission get sets of the 24 by 36 plots, which are expensive to run, the planning commission, if they approve the site plan, needs the actual sets, the 24 by 36. So the chairman, so the plans can be dated and signed by the chairman of the planning commission and the applicant, so we have a... The site plan is actually a legal document. So we want to have two sets of drawings that are signed and dated by both parties, so that when it's built in the field, it's getting built per what was approved. Now, the ten sets, 11 by 17, they can be done either way. Either the applicant can submit them with his application, or the township wants. The township can run off the 11 by 17, I don't really care. But the 11 by 17, 11 by 17 drawings are for the planning commission to have a set of the drawings physically as part of the pack. That's why we asked for ten sets. And then, in order for the public record, for archival purposes, we want to have a digital copy, PDF, so it can get filed electronically with the township. So we've got two sets that eventually, when it gets approved, are signed and sealed by both, are signed and dated by both. Ten sets, which go to everybody here, plus me, township engineer, and then a PDF copy for the archive.
Or should I be directing my question to you?
Thanks.
Okay. So is, is it my understanding that this is vastly different than what we were doing before? No, okay.
All right. That's okay, Mr. Tassier. And I myself have worked, this is just a statement, not a question. I myself have worked in the plan room of a major construction company in Michigan. That's standard. Everybody, every place, but up north. That is standard, and it needs to be pretty much crossword, because copies have to be sent to some contractors, the planning commission that... Any other questions or comments, Mr. Eichmann?
It's not related to my last one, but I did notice that in this version of this ordinance that we're talking about, the next ordinance that we're looking at is referenced in this one that hasn't been approved yet.
Wait, what do you mean?
The Work Smith Mixed Residential or Mixed Use or whatever, that's in this document. You're not going to address that, that change, totally not.
Right.
Are you saying that if that, if that ordinance is referenced in this?
But... Yeah, there's more steps, but you don't have to go back and change.
Any further questions?
Yes. Kelly Brown, Ascota. Mr. Eichmann, you brought up about the extension process after a year. Is that done administratively, or is that done by this board? Because we've had both occur in the past, so I wasn't quite sure where that's clarified and which way that will be done.
The planning commission is part of the issue. How long do you want to give the applicant to give the six months, a year? They can specify two years. I don't want to put a specific date in there, it's really, it's up to the planning commission. And the reason why I do it that way is it depends on the time of year that the plan is approved, okay?
Right, that wasn't my question, though.
It would be, it would be in the minutes, okay? And it would be up to the zoning administrator to manage the timeframe. So like if this evening, they approved the site plan, then they would select when the site plan would expire, and that would be in the minutes, and that would be the responsibility of the zoning administrator to make sure that when that calendar comes up, that they've either taken their building permit out, or he comes back to the planning commission and says, "There are years left, do you want to extend it, or what action do you want to take?"
Right, so the last part was actually my question. So you're clarifying that any extension, regardless of what the minutes show, whether it's six-month timeframe, a year timeframe for a project, if they should get their building permit but haven't completed their project during that time, they come to the planning commission for approval of their extension to their plans, not to the zoning director?
Correct. I mean, if they get their building permit within their timeframe, they're going to go.
Okay, and if they don't, they still would come to the planning commission, not the zoning director?
They come to the planning commission, has to approve it.
Okay, great, because I think there was some confusion before, where the prior zoning director in some instances was allowed to issue extensions for projects that didn't have a planning?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions? Just a grammatical correction that I might, you know, call it some later, but I think these are lines, there's like numbers on the lines, right? Is it 247 or 248, where denial is on page seven, I think? This denial says, "If the planning commission determines that the proposed site plan does not meet the standards of this ordinance, or that it will tend to be detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, or order of development of the township," and then there's a period, I think that should be an comma, "of the township, comma, it shall deny the application by..."
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And I might add to that, if I may, that I should refer to how it should be written from the that in the second line, or did you say that? More questions or comments on this?
So two signatures?
Two signatures?
When a site plan is approved, the chair of the planning commission signs each of the pages and dates it along with the applicant, signs and dates it. And then, Fred, a copy stays with you, and a copy goes with the applicant.
Anything further? Hearing, no further comments or questions, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I would make a public hearing in going to delivery. Support, O'Connor?
Motion by Mr. Tassier, supported by Mr. O'Connor, to close the public hearing. Open deliberations, roll call, please.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary, would you like to make a comment during this deliberation period?
No, I'm good.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, I have a question for John. Retired construction superintendent in my share of red line drives and ad fills. Do we have anything that requires the developer or the builder to give us a set of master builds?
Not in the site plan ordinance, no, no. But I think in the ordinance rewrite, what we're going to do, the township's going to be doing, that would certainly be in there.
Could we make sure that we follow up on that?
Yes, absolutely.
It's funny, it's a different principle, like how many pages we turn, but how important that is for remodels or anything that goes on. A perfect example of what we're talking about is all of the water lines that we don't know where they are in this township, so like to walk.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, let me check with you.
Yeah, I would just like to say that when we did in the past, we stamping of those plans and signing them, we used to do that. The, I would like to add to that is, when we approved site plans and we had those plans in front of us, we would write all the conditions, if they were added conditions, onto that site plan. We would write those conditions down in order from the motion, put the stamp over the top of that, so that that's verifying and showing that those were conditions, were part of the motion. So I would recommend that that was a practice that continues, so that the site plans, because if we, if we put, if there's a condition on special use, we would need that noted, that that was one of the conditions were approved, and it might not be on the site plan. So I recommend that we write that condition down, and not just in the motion, but after we have it on the site, stamp it. Excuse me. Also adding on to what Mr. Tassier just talked to, it may not have to go right over what Bob was talking about, because then we'd never be able to read it on the basis. I understand what you're saying with that, but if we could also have included on this, and I'm just going to say, a stamp that would have a line for our engineer, his signature, our fire, our police, and who else am I forgetting here? That they have reviewed this, that all the departments have reviewed this, so that we have it on that one plan, that everybody that goes in and views them from the commission here doesn't have to wonder, hey, did so and so? We can see that it was already done right there.
Yes, Mr. Eichmann, I'd like to do a comment on what Mr. O'Connor just said. Is there any reason not to do that?
No, I think when you have the, a lot of communities have the stamp made, rubber stamp, and then they have all that information, and they stamp it, then it's got the, you would have the areas for the township engineer, the fire, the police to sign and date it. So it can literally put on the stamp. So, yeah, we can do that.
I like that very much, as my comment ended, if someone or other like MDOT or Iosco County Road Commission could just be in a, in addition by the consulting director, but I really appreciate the legality of that. After that, is there any further deliberation? Ask for a motion to, yeah, to, well, ask for...
To amend the ordinance.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to amend the ordinance in accordance with what's been presented.
I move that we recommend amending the 165 ordinance article for the charter township of Ascota zoning, Article 10, Section 10.1, with 10.5 site plan review provisions and procedures, with the language provided today, June 3, 2024, as dated February 5, 2024, and previous language stayed.
Would you entertain a currently amendment to include the stamping on the site plan as was discussed, or are you incorporating that into your motion?
I would add three conditions while we're doing it, okay? Because I, the new code is probably going to take another twelve, eighteen months, so I would do this, I would say, if you're comfortable with the current ordinance, the way that it's prepared, add three conditions that would be amended into the ordinance that goes to the trustees. The first one would be that the conditions of approval, if any, would be listed on the site plan. Second one would be that as part of the signing of the document, that that include the planning commission chair, the applicant, public safety, and the township engineer. And then the third condition would be, not a condition, the third part I would add, because we're going to have about a nineteen-month gap, is that at the conclusion of the construction project, the applicant will submit to the township and to the Iosco County Building Department an asphalt set of the drawings. That'll, that'll get us to that again in a month, yeah. So those would be the three other provisions I would incorporate into the ordinance that would go into justice. That would amend my motion to include those three.
Support, O'Connor?
Motion by Mr. Tassier, supported by Mr. O'Connor, as was beautifully stated by the previous speakers, I'm not going to try to mess up their words, so roll call, please.
Mr. Tassier?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we are passing this on to the Board of Trustees. Next, we'll move on to the electric vehicle charging stations.
I move that we open public hearing for the ordinance to amend the 165 Article 4 of Charter Township of Ascota, or Section 6.1, Section 1 Amendment, 6.36, electric charging vehicle stations.
Did you say it's Section 1?
It's Section 1 of 6, amend the new section of Section 6.26, electric vehicle charging station.
Okay. Do I have a second? Open the public hearing? Mr. Anderson? Okay. Mr. Tassier, second by Mr. Anderson, so you'll open the public hearing, roll call, please.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Did I say Ms. Becker?
Yep.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now open, summarized with the previous proposed amendment. Now, I would turn to Mr. Eichmann, to present a summary.
Madam Chair, members of the public, ordinance here adds on the article currently on the Article 6, Section number 36, which would be Section 6.36, electric vehicle charging station. Part of this came up through the...
Part of this came up through the charging station that was installed over at Rogers, uh, on 23 and, uh, that was part of it, that there was no zoning permit pulled or any other permits pulled for the install, which is not uncommon right now because the technology has moved faster than the municipalities have done in order to create, uh, the procedures for electric stuff, charging stations. The, the ordinance is really set up primarily to, it's based on the current national standards. You have three different types of charging levels. Level 1 is a charging station with the voltage from 0 to 120. Level 2 is between 120 volts up to 240. And those type, those two could actually be accommodated in your home. If you have an electric vehicle or a hybrid. Uh, Level 3 is the voltage is greater than 240, and those are the high-speed charging units. Those are the ones that are usually, usually used at commercial establishments, uh, that are being installed because they require their own separate transformer, okay? And some of the transformers, depending on the length of time that it takes to charge, some of those transformers can be anywhere from 4 to 6 feet high. So they're definitely commercial grade installed outside. And the ordinance basically just sets up the mechanism where Level 1 and Level 2 can go. They can go in the garage, or they can go outside the garage. If they go outside somebody's garage, they have to be, they can't be in the setbacks, okay? So you can't just install them in a front yard, side yard setback. Uh, and then Level 3 is, that's got some provisions relative to where they can be established, on the apartment space. They can't be in the, you know, they're up against the building. But we do reference in here, uh, the, uh, the current, uh, standards for the, uh, relative to the location in terms of the equipment standards and protections. So, uh, what's gonna happen is, somebody wants to put a commercial grade, uh, install, electric installation in it, then they would go to the building department, go to the zoning administrator to get a permit. Uh, the zoning administrator returns the zoning permit over to IASC County. The applicant that's installing a commercial grade, Level 3, would have to get an electrical permit and would have to get inspected by the county. And we, in the township, doesn't have to go to site plan review. The zoning administrator would just make sure that it's not in any of the setbacks. So it's, it's, it's pretty standardized, but it does require somebody, uh, wanting to put in a, a charging station to come and get a zoning permit so we can track it, make sure that it's not in, you know, the setbacks or in the front yard. So that's, this is what's currently, currently going on throughout the state right now. It's everybody's trying to catch up with the hybrids and electric vehicles.
Thank you. So now it's time to, um, see if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the ordinance? And hearing now, now it's time for questions or comments from the public? Ms. Tooten?
Yes, I have a question. How much are these electric vehicle charging stations actually being used here?
Well, uh, I, I know that there's one over Rogers, and, um, I'm sure there's probably some that are in residential areas. People that currently have hybrids or total EVs. Uh, but they're coming, becoming more prevalent. I just reviewed, uh, another, another community where their, a gas station is installing floor, and they have some rather large equipment that goes with them, so it's, it's happening. The infi, the infrastructure is catching up with the population, I'm not sure why. Some people are saying they don't wanna buy them all, they call it, uh, uh, they have some type of charging anxiety because they're afraid that if they get into a community and they need to charge, they can't find a charger. So what's gonna happen, I think, is as these become more prevalent, you're gonna have third-party providers that start putting them up. Kind of like what we see with non-bank ATM machines, when people go to a gas station and put up an ATM. It's a third party, I think we're gonna be starting seeing it. This is just a, an ordinance to make sure that they're properly installed, they get a electrical permit, and we get a zoning permit form so we can make sure they're not gonna be in a setback.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
Actually, I do have one quick one.
Ms. Brown?
Um, thank you. Uh, on the charging stations, and I don't own an electric vehicle, but I've seen some people talking about them. Um, is there a difference between the vehicles that are, um, manufactured by one particular manufacturer over another? So is there anything in the ordinance that addresses what, like, type of charging specifically?
That's up to the, the type of charge.
Like the Tesla versus, say, a Bolt?
Tesla has their own versus like Ford Motor Company is a different one. There is a, at, at the national level, they're talking about standardizing the adapters. But right now, if you have a Tesla, you have to use their charger. If you have a Ford Lightning, they're gonna, they're gonna have their own, uh, type of charger that goes with it.
So is there anything in here that says we wanna make it universal for regardless?
We can't, we can't.
I believe what you're asking is if the Tesla and Ford Lightning wanna plug into the same one, they could.
Can they?
They have, they have adapters.
They have.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just didn't.
It's like campers have their own adapters for plugging into the 220 or 110, so.
That was it, thank you.
Okay then, I'm entertaining, uh.
I move that we, um, close all the comments, we'll let you, uh, deliver your.
Second, then, third.
Motion by Mr. Tassier, seconded by Mr. Clary, to close public hearing and open deliberations. Roll call please.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clary? Yes. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Ms. Hoprock?
Yes.
Motion carries. No deliberation. Mr. Tassier, would you like to?
Yeah, uh, there are, let's speed it. Presently in IASC, I know of, uh, there's also charging units over in the, um, parking lot on the office. And, uh, we will be seeing these, um, more often, it's like a gas station, what type of brand, gas engineer line. So, uh, the owners of those are collecting fees, like the township also would collect part of the fee. The one on, uh, the, uh, the, the, uh, office over there, um, part of that is a subsidy that goes back into the township.
So I was, I, I'm sorry, what was that last part of that?
Part of the fees go back, there's a surcharge that goes back to the township.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Clary, comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor?
Uh, I'm good, but I will just mention that we did just go through this with our F-41, our Corridor Arch Banchet. When we talked about fueling stations, we changed the name to fueling stations. Uh, we're all gonna appreciate them forever, we're gonna call them gas stations. Then we have provisions for charging stations there. This just helps a little more clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson? Okay, Ms. Becker? I just have a slight, uh, in the outline, so, uh, 926 or 27, our outline goes from F to H. Is that correct then?
Good.
So the same lettering. Any further deliberation? Mr. Anderson, roll call please. I will close the deliberations and request a motion.
I have a motion.
Mr. Tassier?
I move that we recommend amending the 165 ordinance in Charter Township of Las Cota Article 4 to include Section 6.36, electric vehicle charging station, Section 6.36.1 through Section 6.36.5 with the language provided today, June 3rd, 2024, dated, um, December 5th, 2023, with the correction that online, uh, that mentioned, correct. Roll call.
Yes. Second?
Second, Clary.
Second by Clary. Did everyone hear the motion as stated by Mr. Tassier? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Tassier?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clary?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Hoprock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we will move to the proposed amendment to the Woodsboro Flight District. Yeah, I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing for the, for the Woodsboro Flight District.
Second? By Mr. Anderson, right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Ms. Hoprock?
Yes.
Mr. Tassier? Mr. Eglantly, provide any other questions?
Yes, I can, uh, the, the, the proposed ordinance is to, best way to explain it, it's to, this area here, there's a park called, the old farm in Woodsboro, Air Force Base, this is the proposed zoning. Currently, there's approximately six different zoning districts in this area. And, you know, it's like single-family, one-style, modern, couple different business districts. The idea was, was consolidate these into three different mixed-use districts. So you have the residential district, which is primarily all of itself perimeter road. It includes the current residential neighborhood here, and then this is the residential neighborhood that this HOA, they own this property here. Then there's the business district that's up along Skeels Road, and then north of Perimeter, and then north of Arrow up in here, this is the industrial research area. Okay, so it's got different uses. And the, the idea with the ordinance was to make it more flexible for uses within these three zones. So it provides greater flexibility, uh, to the people, to the property owner. It does establish the character. The idea is that eventually, as this gets built out, uh, this should have the same number of uses that a traditional neighborhood would have. Say you'd have residential, business, research, industrial. You've got public institutional uses in here. You've got the public library, for example. Uh, you've got some healthcare, you've got, the LPN Community College has a small facility. So you're, you're already starting to build the kind of a mixed-use neighborhood over on this side of the township. Uh, and what the ordinance does is it, it, it tries to establish a character. Now, over the last year that we worked on this, we tried to find a definitive character for this area. And we couldn't do it, primarily because it was developed traditionally as an air force base. And the buildings are, they don't follow any rhyme or reason or any setbacks. They're just, they're just put on different parcels. What we did find though is, we do have an opportunity along Skeel, uh, along Arrow, and along Perimeter, to actually start putting in some consistent setbacks. And like along Skeel, the setback is 40 feet from the right of it. We, we analyzed all the buildings and they're all kind of around 40 or 65 feet back from the road. So we decided to create a, some uniform setbacks within these areas that eventually would get, uh, uh, we'd have sidewalks, we already had some sidewalks up here, landscaping, street lighting. So over a period of time, this would start building out and be more consistent. So, uh, that's kind of why this is put together. It's kind of on the basis of the form-based code, it's a hybrid. I, I, it does allow, I know the planning commission's gone through this over, over the last year or more. It includes a lot of flexibility for the property owners, more uses, introduces the idea that you could have duplexes and triplexes in here, uh, plus a variety of different businesses and research facilities. And it does respect the fact that there is an airport authority that owns property like in here, over here. So we didn't mess around with any of the property that is under the jurisdiction of the airport authority. This is just property that's under the management of the township zoning code. So in a nutshell, that's kind of how this is all laid out, alright? Uh, probably the most significant part of the ordinance is in Section 42610, which is the district standards. And that's what outlines the setbacks, uh, based on the right of it. And we did, we coordinated, we worked with, uh, IASC County, uh, in terms of finding all of the names to all of the different roads in here, because all of these are under the jurisdiction of the county. So they provided us some of the old maps that were transferred to them by the, by the United States Air Force in order to come up with the various names of some of the roads that are there. And there are some roads that, uh, in my opinion, there's so many roads in here that some of them over a period of time need to be abandoned, you know, in aggregate. Because they just, they no longer make sense, you know? So, but anyway, that's, that's for another day. We did, uh, have requirements in here for site lighting, uh, water quality, uh, facade massing, roof top units, and building materials that are much consistent with what we did along M4, uh, F-41 and US 23. So we're trying to make all the same, make the same requirements consistent. And when we do the new code, instead of repeating all of these in the various ordinances that we've done, in the new code, there'll be a section that just has all of the landscaping requirements, the building requirements, and everything just township in one area to make it a bit more user-friendly. But right now, we have to do them on a case-by-case basis. So, uh, that's it, let's, the planning commission doesn't count. Quite enough.
Thank you, any questions?
What part of the, uh, sequence and by, what about the question? Anyone who wish to speak in favor? Okay, Mr. Sturba. Okay, I have a couple things. So if we, um, look at, well, first of all, I'm starting with the map. So that map over there looks awesome, I can see it, I can read it, but the miniature version is hard to read. I don't know why the translation, I don't know what happens in translation, usually smaller, I don't know. I don't know, but it is hard to read in hard version. And I didn't, I don't find that typical with the other, you know, maps that have been produced for, for these, so. Harder. Um, on, uh, first of all, the, uh, residential, so for the intent, one and two-story residential unit consisting of several annual requests. Where are they?
Seven and three.
Yeah, sorry. WMX, for the intent, it says one and two-story residential unit. And then if you go down on the next page, in the typical building type, it says one to three-story, and that's one story. So there's a discrepancy there. One hundred, but, it's all internal. On WMX, uh, business institutional, uh, furniture types. It says new uses should run onto Skeel and Georgia Street. So if you look at the area that is mapped out, right? Georgia Street, it looks like turns on into Huron Street on that ledge over there.
Yeah.
But, so, and then, but you, you are really limiting these new, these new uses to two streets. But, so, and then, but you, you are really limiting these new, these new uses to two streets with all sorts of street permits. So I have a concern about that. I don't know every single street, but you know, I suspect there's a lot or two that.
Well, no, I think, maybe what you're, uh. You've got, uh. You've got primary road.
Right.
And then you have Georgia, which. Yeah, because once it gets over perimeter, it turns into Huron, why it goes all the way up. And our thought was that the, the uses along these roads, some of these other ones have already been pretty much decided. And then this road here, along this road, the uses would face on to the street. That's what we were trying to get to design.
Is there gonna be, I mean, is the name of the road incorrect on the map or?
No, I mean, that, 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 that's how the road commission gave it. Georgia, when it gets across perimeter, for some reason, it turns into Huron.
So you want to correct that to?
We could put Georgia's way around.
Good, make it consistent. And. And then the, again, I'm going, I'm going to reference the height, the typical building heights. The way that you have them listed in each of the three, um, zones, um, the, the verbiage is different in each height. So typical building height for residential is one to three stories, maximum height forty feet. That's very clear. And then you get to, um, uh, the business and the institutional, it says multi stories, maximum height forty, forty-five feet. And then, and then it gets even cookier in the next one. So I would have you guys look at that and see if you could streamline it. I mean, if it were me, I'd make them all the same height, so it's easy to understand, but you know, I don't know if that's possible or not. And then we get to the land use table. You reference your, um, your identified, you know, in the table, um, abbreviations, permitting use of feet. And special use permit is an S U P. And when you get to the table, you're only using S for the S U P. So that looks like a correction that needs to happen in the table. So it says S U P instead of just S.
You got that right, Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, I think.
And I know that you've come up with the commission before, did, did you want to comment on the heights?
We can standardize the height to forty-five feet, I don't have an issue with that.
Anyways, that's just a comment that I have, you know, when you guys.
Other, uh, comments or questions from the public?
Um, I agree with Mrs. Worshbarth. The map on the planning commission documents in this one, um. The, I didn't have time to look at it because obviously that white section that is covered by the Wurth Smith district's, um, zoning, that wasn't visible on this map. So questions since now, number one, they're adjacent to all of these areas, um, the business and the industrial, not to the residential area. But how does the business and the residential zoning that we're presenting here coincide or complement the adjacent area that's under the Wurth Smith district? Um, that's my first thing. And then number two, you mentioned that there's that street, Georgia to Huron, that's running from the residential into the industrial, which borders on the business and then up into that section that isn't under the zoning control that you're talking about here. So is there any overlap on potential conflicts if someone is building and it extends over? Or it's adjacent so that they don't look odd? Whether it's building materials, whether it's the size and height? How does that get reconciled so it's not looking like, you know, a circus?
Well, that's, we, we have no control, the ordinance doesn't have any control over the airport authority in terms of what their development standards are. That's why it's all laid on the board. We took a look at it. We, we're not allowed, we're not, we're not zoning it. We, we can't, we can't apply our regulations to their property because it's a special district that's set up.
Right, I understand that. My, I guess my question is, and maybe this has been looked at, as you're saying that you have no control over it, but has it been reviewed to make sure that there's continuity?
Well, yeah, I did take a look at it, you're gonna end up with what they, currently what they have across the street with the, uh, the current operations there, pretty much gonna look like that, like an airport facility. Um, but uses on this side here, the, uh, you know, you have your airport facilities that are part of airport operation. These are gonna be different in scale, and we have the massive buildings over here.
Right.
There's not much I can do relative to, for massing because these are so large that. But, you know, these areas in here are designed to be a combination of two, three and four story. We also. At this site point, we're gonna have to also evaluate it based on the, uh, the flight, the, uh, they call it the L A P, it's the, uh, airport, it's the air, it's the airport layout plan, the A L P. So they have, they have their own layout plan with their, you know, with their, uh, clear areas relative to height that we also have to respect. I don't show that map, we have that map as well. That's from the, uh, federal aviation and Michigan Air Station.
So in general, since you already reviewed it, is there continuity? Are we gonna see huge aircraft mechanic buildings going up next to the regulations in purple that you guys are controlling here with this ordinance?
Uh, you're pretty much, this is pretty much all developed already.
I'm talking about that white section in the middle.
Talking about here?
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking maybe a large buildings in there, but the buildings are gonna, again, are gonna look a little bit different than what we currently have in this area.
Right.
Not much I can do with.
Right.
We took a look at it.
Got it, yeah. Yeah, and then the form based code, you mentioned that this is a hybrid approach?
Yes.
Is that something you're building into the other areas? Maybe it's a future question, but you mentioned about this being a hybrid, which I've talked to, um, our planning zoning director about that several times and provided him with some stuff I came across. So is that something that our rural community is going to embrace, a hybrid?
We already have, we already have hybrid for US twenty-three and for F forty-one. And then the area down by Township Hall, the state street area, down there, we have the smaller blocks. That was one of, that was the first hybrid area. The second one was US twenty-three and F forty-one. This will be the third. And they're, they're pretty much consistent in terms of how they're laid out.
Okay, because like the setbacks, I think then you have more, um, like in the business district down the US twenty-three? Would that be similar here with the setbacks?
Set, setbacks here are large, wide.
Right.
Because of the way that.
So they will vary on a hybrid, whether it's the business district or this particular district, then is what you're saying? Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I have a question. Okay, so looking at page eight, I think that's for the res, yeah, residential dimensional standards. And going back to the, maybe consistency in the tables that you have for heights. You have, you, now you're, um, making it more clear between single family and duplex height and triplex and block. Flex height, so there's a three and a half stories listed on that one. Where's that one? It jumps out, I hear the difference in terms of heights.
We're, we're gonna take, that was my line of state, we're gonna take the height, story. And I'm just gonna reflect the narrative and the description so they're consistent.
Other comments?
I'm moving closed, public hearing ended.
Second? Let me spare this.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Clearer?
Yes.
Inspector?
Yes.
Mr. Tassier?
Yes.
Stop rock?
Yes. Carries, deliberations are open. Mr. Tassier, would you like to begin?
Yeah, um, certainly in the heights. I know that there are gonna be different heights in a different, three different types of zoning because residential can normalize, we're redoing, we got a grant to redo the rest of our one sixty-five ordinance, about fifty thousand dollar grant. So we're gonna be putting in standards in there that will address those, a lot of those areas that would include these. So, but when you have a business in like in our, our business districts right now, we, we have, the reason why we put the height standard on, for instance, is like you have a mandatory first floor of fifteen feet. Well, that would be different from a residential area that normally has an eight foot ceiling on the first floor. So the heights are gonna vary. Uh, if you have a four story building, if you have a fifteen foot and a nine foot, if our ordinance has called for nine foot ceiling heights on each one of those, that's, that's a standard up to that. If it's four stories, that's gonna change the height different. So to have a standardized height, because if you, if you don't separate it out into the business and industrial, industrial, you're gonna have vast aircraft going into things. So, so I think you need different height standards because, um, if you don't, then you can have a residential that's gonna put fifteen foot ceilings and they're gonna have three stories at nine foot each. That would be putting it up there pretty high on, in a residential area. So to have a residential standard, a, a business standard and an industrial standard, I think, is warranted. So, um, I, I, I would agree with what those standards listed on there will be. Unless we have in our, in our zoning, one sixty-five, we do a R O B sixty-five ordinance, a standard cross that would, that, that this would reference, but right now we don't have that. So that, that would be my complaint. The other thing is, is that, um, I'm really surprised that we don't have a bathroom in here tonight because this is really important stuff that affects everybody out here. And, and it's a shame that this room isn't filled. Um, uh, I'm sure that it's probably gonna come back to us later that when did this happen? When did that, when did this change? And I would like to point out that this has been in the planning for over a year because what brought this on, not only is it form based, but what brought this on? Because restrictions that are currently out in the zoning that's here stop people from having accessory structures, garages, additions on their homes because they couldn't need setbacks because the airport just pops stuff down where they, wherever they wanted to. So it was very restrictive, um, for the building process out there. Because twenty years from now, it'd be interesting if I'm still alive to come back and look and see what affects these type of form ways will do for our community. Because remember, this is a plan that goes out for the future. You know, and, um, the biggest problem that we have right now, as of today, is our restricted zoning for housing. And unless we address it with things like this to make it more reasonable for people to come in and, and make their homes the way they want their homes, um, we're gonna continue to have those problems. So anything that we can do to, to allow new construction, um, additional construction on their homes and making it a better place, um, for the local community, I, I'm in favor of. I, I think this is the excellent, um, um, paper. I thank Mr. Aguirre and Detective Raider for what the efforts into this. We put this in our capital improvement plan about three or four years ago to do this. And, and, and I think it's wonderful. I think, um, also the next step would be the rest of the zoning, which we got that grant, that fifty thousand dollar grant that was brought here by Florida. Um, and we got that, um, grant to do the rest and clarify, you know, the rest of our needs. So, thank you, and I like this a lot.
Thank you. I'd love comments. Mr. Clearer?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. O'Connor?
Uh, I'm just piggybacking on Mr. Tassier. John, is that going to fit in that, uh, with these building heights in the different district? I, I applaud, um, Ms. Worshbarth for her information, having been on this planning commission, she understands quite well. And just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
I think the general rule that's gonna, on this, maybe to happen. Been needed for so long.
Yes. Mr. Barth? I would like to echo what, um, Mr. Tassier said. Thank you so much to Mr. Aguirre. I think, uh, beautiful. I just have one little, uh, not great thing, and it may be that I misunderstand that. Number, uh, line one thirty-six, it looks like we left down the one and the two, paragraphs one and two. I just got reading that one.
Just got reading.
Okay. Yeah, so that's.
Automatic, don't worry.
And I would also like to reiterate what Mr. Tassier said about how important this is, how important it is to our community to provide opportunities for housing. It's direly needed, it's one of our hugest commitments. And to thank again, Mr. O'Connor for getting that clear, that's awesome. So deliberations are hereby declared closed, unless anyone else has. Okay. Um.
I have a motion.
Please.
I move that we recommend amending the zoning ordinance one sixty-five R four, uh, Dr. Thompson for us, go ahead. Follow, delete section four point five, W R one, residential density residential district. Delete section four point seven, W R two, Wurth Smith medium density residential district. Delete section four point nine, W R three, Wurth Smith high density residential district. Delete section four point one five, Wurth Smith, uh, three, R W B three, Wurth Smith business district. Delete section four point one five eight, W I, Wurth Smith industrial district. Delete section four point two six, Wurth Smith Airport Authority overlay district. And add to section four point two seven and insert section four point two six, W M X Wurth Smith district, mixed use district, section four point two six dash one through four point two six dash ten dash twelve, as submitted today, two and three, twenty twenty-four, as dated, uh, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Support, O'Connor?
Any discussion on the motion?
Let me repeat that?
Okay, roll call please.
Tassier?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Backer?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Clearer?
Yes.
Stop rock?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much, John, my heart work. Next, we'll go to our reports. The zoning board review, if you have a minute?
I'm not, pretty much not, I did it all by myself. Most parts of it, I don't have an, I don't have a, any meaning.
Thank you, O T P, right?
Okay, um, we approve standing voices for, uh, twenty twenty-four, who definitely approve the same program. Um, funding is, when funding is available. We approve backfilling an officer in twenty twenty-five, um, if, if we send an officer to staying. And we approve accepting a letter of support to sell property on King's Corner to traverse sanitation. We approve the purchase of a mini escalator for the D P W. And we approve writing a letter of support for the Lake State Rail, Railways. Uh, we approve facade grants that were submitted by the E I C. And we approve language for police village request.
Thank you. Next, we have the, uh, report of the E O C.
Yes. Is it the question?
That's Mr. O'Connor, okay, that's to add to the. Mr. O'Connor, not to catch you unawares, but you have a report for, tell you, a report for the E I C?
We have not yet.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I'm sure.
Okay, comments from the planning commission members? Should we go to the next?
Just a little bit, you hear that?
Okay.
Um, no, I don't, I don't really have any comments, but I think what we're doing, um, is good. Happy to power handling it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I quote you as an attaboy.
Huh?
I quote you as like attaboy, attaboy.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, um, I apologize for standing, I suffered through a terrible leg cramp. Uh, please accept my apology here.
No.
Uh, I would like to thank Mr. Tassier for writing out those motions, uh, so well written to include all the info. Thank you, Bob, that's, uh, we're very appreciative of that. We don't mean to just make you write out all of the motions, but I know you've come.
We don't mean to just make you write out all of the motions, but I know you've come well-prepared. Uh, I thank the guests for coming, attending today, and, uh, for understanding of the work that we do. And, uh, we certainly appreciate your input, and that's what you're here for. You could have, you could have had more base.
Does he have a second? If you have a comment?
No.
Does he, does he come with, with, this backman, I'm not sure.
Yeah, one comment I would like to make is, uh, we got excellent training, Mr. John, I can actually give excellent training for us for planning essentials to take down. Um, these were normal processes that we always did annually, um, in a township. Um, I, I would recommend that, um, we, um, do another one, maybe later. We used to do them in September, do one in spring, and one in fall. And my recommendation would be to do, um, conflict resolution, type of, uh, uh, training session. And another, another training session that I, that I had taken years ago, um, had to do with legalities, strictly legality. It was taught by Catherine Kaufman. I went to that one. Um, I can't remember what it was called. Um, but we should probably look into that. It covered, it covered planning commission ethics and legalities and, and things, a lot of things that if you took a citizen planners course, a lot of that is covered in there. But I think having a session here, um, um, would be beneficial. And that's just thoughts. These are just my thoughts going out there. I was appointed to be the education guy for the, for the, for the, for the group. So, um, any recommendations on type of training that planning commission would, would like to see? Um, I would definitely put you on a train of thought to start thinking about those things, so we can address that. We offer that in a fifty-mile radius. Um, we're very, very close to becoming a, a hub through the Michigan Association of Planners. We offered this bill, recharge to do that. Um, they do training in Frankham, Worth, and Gaylord, but nothing over here on the side. So, um, I, um, I, I would highly recommend we continue to stay kind of here.
And it was a big turnout for other communities, too.
Yeah, we've had as many as sixty people.
I mean, the one on Wednesday was, I was surprised to see so many people. It was good.
We, we've had as many as sixty people in those training sessions. So it is well-received.
Yeah.
We just need to get it out there, and we need to put it out. One of the training boards working together, that was a very, very good session also, that, 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 um, we brought that once here. It wasn't very well-attended.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I would like to see it happen again, maybe, maybe bring it a little bit more in tune with our needs. So, just, just thoughts.
For my comment, I'd like to remind us that we do want to meet with the township board and the C P A and the E I C. We have made the intention to, um, have all the words meet, and I don't think we have any words. And it's just a good idea, we need to get our minds together.
We discuss that today.
Same age, great. Okay. And now the report, the person?
We discuss that today. Um, Tammy, Josh, myself, all dealing together, John, Bob, was there? Yeah, I, my report, I've, I've got a report. This process was, so my, our next planning commission meeting, I'll present a report for all of the, I've been here for two months, I did. For your, I go to the, the session.
Yeah.
I didn't have a close question. Are we gonna start reading here?
No.
Okay, this is just a special?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
They just include Siri.
Huh?
They're still Siri.
I do, I like it, actually. I just recommend maybe you sit in the middle and talk.
Can't hear you.
It is a beautiful place for reading.
So it's, yeah, it's, maybe start with the whole people.
Little smaller. I thought it was gonna be, it looks pretty big.
No, it's, it's, okay. Um, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.